You have.
Good evening to all. Okay. At this time, I'd like to call the order to order the May thirteenth, twenty twenty one, meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission. Can we please have a roll call?
Okay. Jeffrey Musall.
Present.
Sharon Capri.
Present.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Gina Morris. She must be absent. Charles Aben.
He is excused.
He is excused. Robert Sherry.
Present.
Jason Dale.
Here.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you. So at this time, I'd like to open up the meeting to any public comments that are for items not on the agenda. If there's anyone in our room at all. We have no one.
Um, what was public comments? I don't know. I don't see anyone with their hand up.
Okay. Give it just another minute here.
Um, there's a virtual hand if anyone wants to raise it.
Okay.
Okay, there's a Joseph. Arada.
Okay, Joseph, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
So this is the meeting about the duplexes in Northwest Newburgh, is that right?
Yes, it is. And that will be later on the agenda. First, we're going to have a hearing on our stormwater master plan. Then we'll move into the duplex regulations.
Okay, do you have any idea of how long that'll be?
Could be fifteen, twenty minutes or so.
Okay. I'll hang around. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands.
Okay, then let's go ahead and move on. And to our consent calendar. And look at our commission meeting minutes from the twelfth meeting.
My commissioner, right? I move to approve approve planning commission minutes for April eighth, twenty twenty one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we get a vote, please?
Who did the second on that one?
Jason.
Okay.
Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
And you want a verbal vote?
That's fine.
Okay, Jason Dale.
Hi.
Robert Sherry.
Hi.
Chris Wright.
Hi.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Jeffrey Musall.
Yes.
They passed.
Okay, so we're ready for a few legislative public hearings. And our first one is going to be regarding stormwater, as we talked about. And first up, I'd like to call for any abstentions, conflicts of interest, or objections to any jurisdiction with regard to the matter at hand. So hearing none, if we can move on to the staff report. And again, it's for a comprehensive plan amendment. Incorporating the twenty twenty stormwater master plan into the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So as noted, this is a comprehensive plan amendment, CPTA twenty dash zero 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 five, addressing the stormwater master plan. So you have been through a number of these. This is our last one of the four. So our functional plans are part of our comprehensive plan. And so to do an amendment to our stormwater master plan, it requires that we hold a public hearing. So at the beginning, I always try to remind myself to enter the entire staff report to the exhibits and the attachments into the record. For the stormwater master plan, we had an ad hoc citizens advisory committee. I've shared this with you on two of our other proposals on water and wastewater. And so they've met. They worked with staff and the various consultants we had working on these projects. In your staff report, we've listed out all of the information about dates, times, that we've had a whole variety of meetings that have been held to address this particular issue. When we get to the end, I will give you recommendations from the ad hoc committee and the planning commission. So we have with us tonight Natalie Jennings, who will do the bulk of the work this evening, walking through the stormwater master plan, and Brett Music, our senior engineer, who is managing this particular project. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Natalie and PowerPoint.
Hello. Looks like the screen sharing is still disabled. So can someone please enable me? There we go. Alrighty, can you all see my screen?
Yep.
Perfect. Oops, and I managed to get on slide number two instead of slide number one. Slide number one's only cover page. So real quick, if you guys haven't been through a stormwater master plan update yet, I wanted to give you a quick overview of what that is. It sounds like you've dealt with a few other master plans recently, so it's kind of similar to the other utilities. It it's a combination of a description of the existing physical characteristics of the system. And then we go through and evaluate that those conditions to see how they're doing, how they're functioning, what condition they're in, that sort of thing. And if any maintenance needs to be done. And then we put it all in a computer hydraulic model in which we evaluate capacity mostly. And the results of that provide recommended improvements, as well as we included improvements from maintenance staff, as well as the community and some other things. We also did a review of the development standards and staffing levels. And all of this comes in at the end with, we estimate costs for these capital improvement projects and create a initial CIP that the city will later turn into a formalized capital improvement plan. Um, okay. Hopefully, these little boxes aren't in front of your screen. Um, that I had everyone's face in front of the text, so I don't know if that's what you guys saw or not, but. So why are we updating this plan? The city code requires that we do it every five years. Um, and also, this particular time, there's been a lot of development since twenty fourteen, which is the last time that the plan was done. And one major change that has happened is the design storm and the design standards has changed from the ten year design storm to the twenty five year design storm, which results in a lot of areas that are now considered flooding that wouldn't have been considered flooding previously. A quick background on ten year versus twenty five year design storm. That mean, a ten year design storm means a storm that will happen once every ten years. So it's smaller than a storm that will happen once in every twenty five years. And that's not it it doesn't mean that every twenty five years that happens, it means that there's a one in there's a it there's a percent chance that it's going to happen in that given year. So like for a ten year storm, there's a ten percent chance that a ten year storm will happen in any given year. We also incorporated the riverfront master plan area into this plan. Um, this is a quick overview of how the stormwater system goes with the with everything in the planning and construction. So we start out with a stormwater master plan. And it provides we evaluate the system problems and recommend solutions in the capital improvement plan, including costs for budgeting purposes. Then the city goes through and creates a five year capital improvement program from those recommended things based on other things that are going on in the city, like, do you have roads going in? Well, that's a great time to put in a pipe. Or maybe there's some community priority of doing one project or another. You can always change priority of these projects. We just pick one solution that seems like the best, but there's always changing moving mechanisms as as every five years goes along. And then from that five year capital improvement plan, the city then selects projects for construction. They go into pre-design and design, and then finally, construction. And the there's community feedback and city consultant recommendations that go into both the stormwater master plan, as well as the public works design and construction standards, which go into the design process. So essentially, that's saying that the community feedback is going around everywhere essentially. Oh, no, I skipped a slide, I think. There we go. Why is it not letting me stop on that slide? Sorry about that. For some reason, it's not letting me stop there. Sorry about that. Oh. Okay, so this is a problem areas slide. We've labeled all the problem areas in the report. If you want to look into more detail about it, you can read the report. They're all labeled with an alpha numeric code. These are all capacity problems, so they start with a C dash, a letter. And the letter is just an identifier. It doesn't mean A isn't worse than B. It's just, it's an identifier. Uh, the red dots are worse than the orange dots, which are worse than the yellow dots. So yellow floods the least frequently and red floods all the time. This is kind of what we're looking at here for problems in terms that we found in the hydraulic model. Change the slide for me. There we go. And this slide is very hard to see, but the better map of it, you can see in the full report, which is the maintenance issues. And on this map, we've included places where there need to be spot repairs or a full replacement of the facility, whether that's a pipe or a catch basin, manhole, whatever. It also has flooding. And and there's some maintenance issues on there that, just so they're documented, that maintenance has discovered, like it's a frequently and there are needing frequent cleaning, or there's like one of them's a shopping cart in in one of the areas or something like that. Um. Yep, that's pretty much it for that. In terms of what these maintenance issues are, just dotted list, there seventeen confirmed flooding areas. So there's a lot more flooding that's probably happening. But these are the documented bases, either from a citizen complaint or from maintenance staff going out and recording it in the system. Um, there's forty one catch basins, manholes, pipes, and outfalls that need replacement. Uh, there's one sinkhole and eight locations need maintenance that are not capital improvement related, that just need to be cleaned or something like that at eighteen spot repairs. Um, so there's other, some other non-capacity related issues that we looked into, such as pipes older than fifty years old. Depending on the type of pipe, the typical lifespan is anywhere from fifty to a hundred years. So anything older than fifty is a concern. If you do look in the report and look at that map of the ages of pipe, unfortunately, a lot of the pipe ages are unknown, so they're shown in black and they don't, it doesn't look that bad, but there's most likely a lot more old pipe that we just don't know about. Yeah. And then the pipe material that degrades fastest is cast iron, clay, steel, and corrugated metal pipe, at least for a stormwater system. So those are other pipes that should be prioritized for replacement as they come up. Sorry. And then we've looked through the closed caption television records of the stormwater system. And they do it, they have a scoring system called PACP, and I can never remember what that actually stands for, and I'm sorry, but five me, five is, it's one rated one through five, five is the worst, and it means the pipe has failed or will fail within five years. And so we've highlighted all of those pipes on our maps so that you can see where those areas are. We've won. It's not really a issue, but it's something to be aware of. We've discussed the will limit total maximum daily load. It's a regulation that the whole limit valid needs to look into what they're discharging into any of the streams. So it is just something that we wrote about in there, if you're interested in, as well as preparing for the future NPDES MS four permit. That's something from DEQ that Newburgh doesn't currently need, but it may need in the future. So the city would like to prepare for it as much as possible. It's a discharge permit for stormwater, kind of similar to how the wastewater systems already have permits. Currently in the state, all the smaller communities in Newburgh is currently considered a smaller community for this purpose are all on one single permit, and they've got the same restrictions. But in the future, there will likely be more individual permits. And so that will be something that comes up. Um, this, I won't go into detail about the prioritization here, but if you want to through what they are, these are the categories we used to prioritize things. Once again, A is not necessarily more important than B. But if there are several of these things that a particular project meets, then it's a higher priority than one that might only have one of the priorities. Yeah. So I missed a slide, I'm sorry. Um. So this is our comprehensive figure of all of the improvements that I discussed previously. And this slide, more or less, is just a reference for where to look in the report for different things, if you're interested for more information. So table five two and figure five dash one show the capacity improvements. That's everything from the hydraulic model. The maintenance projects are figure three dash five and table three dash eight. The annual pipe replacement program is figures three dash three, three dash four, and three dash six. Um, and the combined projects are what's shown to the right here is figure five dash two. So it just summarizes everything on one slide. One figure. This slide shows what the capital improvement plan is. It goes through and it it we prioritize projects in zero to five years, six to ten years, eleven to twenty years. The worst, the projects that meet the most prioritization criteria are higher ranked. Uh, two of notes that you might want to look at are CU. I don't know if you can see my cursor, but it's up by Springbrook area. That one is a pretty big problem that results in a pretty big area. So that's one that we're hoping the city can address at some point. And then CB down in the south. It's it it ties in the riverfront area plan. The existing pipe is actually on the street next to it. But we were able to make a new solution using an additional pipe instead of just a bigger one and the exist, replacing the existing pipe using the road that's going to go in because the road's already going to be messed up, so it'll be cheaper to combine those projects. Once again, I won't go into detail about this, but if you want to read through it, I encourage you to do it. It's the design criteria of the CAC committee that Doug was talking about earlier. And HPH recommendations and city staff was also involved in some of these recommendations. Quickly summarizing, we are recommending some language strengthening to some of the existing water quality aspects of the design standards, just to make it clear so citizens feel more comfortable with what's being done already. And then promote the availability of existing stormwater management fee credits. So that's another thing that's important. And oops. Um, and then the CAC recommended several things along the same lines with the water quality stuff. Um, that yeah. That, uh, yeah. Anyway, and then they also wanted to ground truth the model. So the model is not very it isn't very, uh, it's, sorry, that it it um, isn't calibrated perfectly because we could not do it at the time of year when we could do flow monitoring to calibrate it. And unfortunately, the previous consultant wasn't able to either. So we're hoping that next time this goes through, someone is able to calibrate it. So I'll turn it back over to Doug for this next slide.
Thank you, Natalie. So as been mentioned, there was an ad hoc citizens advisory committee that provided guidance to staff and the consultant team in preparing all of this, as we have to do with comprehensive plan amendments. We had to address the statewide planning goals, and so that's included in your staff report. Staff concluded through that analysis that the proposal complies. We also had to evaluate the Newport comprehensive plan, its goals and policies, and the findings that are included identify that this proposal complies with the comp plan. We also had to do an analysis on ORS one ninety seven, seven, twelve, and Oregon Administrative Rule six sixty, division eleven, which is the public facilities planning. So in your staff report, there are many pages that address all of those requirements. And in conclusion, staff found that we met those particular provisions. The final piece of this is that this is a type four procedure. So it's a legislative hearing. Again, we're amending the comprehensive plan. And it's subset, in this case, the stormwater master plan. And staff concluded that through this process and the hearing is that we can comply with those goals. Natalie, next slide. So staff's recommendation is to adopt resolution twenty twenty one, three sixty seven. Um, and that the city council adopt the twenty twenty one stormwater master plan, and that it gets incorporated into the comprehensive plan. Next slide. If planning commission adopts that particular resolution, then we will go to hearing before the city council on June twenty first. And then subsequent to that, then there would be amendments to the city's design and construction standards. Make sure that what we have in the comprehensive plan, what we have in the stormwater master plan is that we have the right design and construction standards to implement those improvements in the future. And with that, Mr. Chair, that will be staff and consultants' presentation.
Well, I thank you, sir. And at this point, are there any public comments? So are the public comments for the next meeting? Okay, hearing none. Like to go ahead and close the public testimony comment time, and we already had some final comments for staff. So are there any commissioners with questions or comments?
I would like to ask Ms. Jennings about how the model takes into account some weather events. Ms. Jennings, are you?
Yeah, I'm back. Um. What, do you have a specific question?
Yeah, so I was just wondering. I understand there were some logistical difficulties with calibrating the model. But was there any attempts made to take into account changes to the, changes to anticipated weather events to climate change in this model? Perhaps more frequent events, I'm just could that have affected the prioritization of projects?
So I, sorry for stumbling on my words in that part of the presentation. It did not sound very good. With, we did do validation to make sure that the model was as good as it could be. It's it's based on standard design storms for this part of the country, which are standardized across the industry. And you scale them, there's, there's maps that have like, based on historical data, and they're updated every once in a while on how much, what exactly a twenty five year storm means, or what exactly a ten year storm means of depth of rainfall in twenty four hours. I'm getting really specific here, so let me know if I'm getting too detailed for you. But um, essentially, yes, we looked into a lot of detail about the stormwater that, like the, the design storm that went into it. It just wasn't ground truth to make sure that so ground truthing is going to do things like make sure that we're not missing a connection, or if there's a giant detention pond somewhere that no one actually knew about, or something like that, that that's what ground truthing is going to do in terms of the hydrology. So there's hydrology and hydraulics that go into one of these. Hydrology is what comes out of the sky, and hydraulics is how it runs through the system. So the hydrology should be pretty correct. The, the hydraulics, you know, you're, you're you, it's as good as it can be without calibration. Hope, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make sure the model was as accurate as possible given the circumstances. Thank you.
Yeah, once again, sorry for stumbling there.
Oh, thank you. And yeah, and a good question. And I think it like what you're getting at is our models are as good as they can be with the information we have. And as, you know, climate change may interact with things going forward, that we have to look at that, but it's kind of hard to incorporate it into a into a plan without some modeling. That that's incorrect.
Yeah, so in terms of climate change in particular, we really have to look at history more than future, but I mean, it could definitely be something that is looked into in a future report specifically. I I would assume that you're anticipating that the amount of rain would go down. I think that that's what you're assuming by climate change.
A lot of the models assume that it goes down, but the there's more higher frequency of the bigger storms, like the ten year storm might become the five year storm and and things like that.
Yeah, um, and I think part of how you deal with that as a city is is just figuring out what you mean by like, when you changed it from the ten year design storm to the twenty five year design storm, that got it more your, your standards more in line with what everybody else is doing. So I think that was a good change that helped moving forward.
That makes sense. Anyone else have any questions?
No, I have a comment. I didn't read all three hundred and thirty three pages. I read a lot of them and and went through them. And to me, it was clearly a very comprehensive report that a lot of work went into. And and it it clearly shows what we need to do in the next five years and ten years. And and, you know, I was real impressed with what you came up with.
Thank you. Appreciate that. It was a lot of hard work.
And Commissioner Wright. Hello, Ms. Jennings. Yes, I agree. Some excellent and comprehensive work has gone into this. Just a statement. Going from a ten to twenty five year standard, as I specialize in atmospheric sciences. And as our climate changes in our equator, as we heat up and the water evaporates from our equator, the water is actually coming up to the northern hemisphere, causing downpours more often than trickling or sprinkling events that will cause downcutting and other issues like that in the future. So it's actually not expected that we'll have a decrease in rain. You'll have an increase, but in the way it's increasing as downpours do not offer charging aquifers and more stripping of soil and other types of events like that. I just wanted to let you know that. I don't know if you guys ran across that information.
I appreciate that information. I haven't, to be honest, I haven't done too much research into how climate change will affect these things moving forward, but I fully anticipate that stormwater master plans will start incorporating that at some point in the near future, but it wasn't the standard at this point, but I could see that being very valuable in the future. So maybe recommend that for the next time.
Yeah, I know the data sets normally derive information off of thirty year accumulated data sets, and those data sets are no longer becoming very accurate. derive information off of thirty year accumulated data sets and those data sets are no longer becoming very accurate. Um, the phenology network, um, is actually showing refinements in that. So just, it's a great resource.
That is fantastic information. I appreciate you sharing.
I appreciate you. Thank you, Ms. Jennings. You guys did great, great work. I appreciate it.
Might point out that by having the twenty five year event, um, that being your criteria, it may not exactly address Christina's concerns, but having it be a bigger event in general, it's going to help towards those larger storm events as they come because let's be realistic, there's no way you're going to be able to do all of these improvements in the next twenty years. There's just not enough.
No.
And so, um, so anything that you do to help in that direction is going to be great. So, yeah, anyway, that's my two cents on that. So.
Awesome.
Thank you. Thank you both. Absolutely. Some good info. Okay. Any, uh, anyone else have anything they'd like to add or comments or questions? Okay, hearing none at this point. Let's move on, um, for, um, actions by planning commission. Um, if anyone would like to offer any action or motion.
Planning Commissioner Wright, I move to adopt revolute, rep- resolution twenty twenty one dash three, six, seven, including exhibits A, B, and C.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you as well. So we have a motion and a second. Can we get a, um, roll call vote, please?
Yes. Jason Dale.
Yes.
Robert Sherry.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Jeffrey Musall.
Yes.
And it passes.
Thank you very much. Okay. As we move ahead, our next item on the agenda is another legislative hearing. This one dealing with amending the Newburgh comprehensive plan, the Northwest Newburgh specific plan, the Springbowl, Springbrook Oak specific plan, and the Springbrook master plan related to duplex regulations that have to do with middle housing. So at this point, I'd like to call for any abstentions, conflicts of interest or objections to any jurisdiction. Okay, hearing none. We'd like to go on and begin with the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, again, Doug Ruck's Community Development Director. So as noted, you have before you, uh, a series of amendments related to House Bill two thousand and one, which was adopted by the legislature in twenty nineteen. Uh, this amends our development code, our comprehensive plan, uh, two of our specific plans and a master plan. There are two other plans that we have, the airport and the riverfront. We did not need to make any amendments to those plans based upon our evaluation. Um, I'll enter the entire staff report, the exhibits and all the attachments into the record. And so we have with us this evening, uh, I think Steve's out there. So we have three J consulting, who's our prime consultant on this project. And so Steve Boust and Heather Austin, and we have our sub consultant, uh, Elizabeth Decker with Jet Planning. And Liz is going to carry a lot of the weight tonight. So I'm just going to queue it up and then I'm going to do like I do on many of these. I'm going to bring it home at the end. Um, so we did have an ad hoc committee, uh, that provided guidance to staff and the consultant team on this project. And they met, they were appointed by the city council. So they held a series of meetings. Um, planning commission, you've had a work session, a joint work session with the city council. So you have seen this before. And staff has briefed you as we've gone through this process. Um, in your staff report, it lists out all of the various dates and you can see that there are many that we have met. Uh, we had, uh, two public open houses, virtual open houses in the world of COVID. So hooray today, the CDC and the governor says, if you're fully vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask in public anymore. So that's a good, good thing. Um, so we garnered input, we have community survey work and that's included in your packet. So we did two surveys going through this process. I think it's important to remind everyone, we're talking about the duplex component of House Bill two thousand and one this evening. There is a companion piece, uh, which is the triplex, the quads, the cottage clusters and the townhomes. We are not reviewing those this evening. We're just focusing on the duplex. Uh, because we have to have that work done by the end of June of twenty twenty one. So we're, we're moving forward with that schedule. Uh, we did get some public comments that are included in your staff report and staff provided some responses to those issues that were raised as well. I think at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth and she's going to walk you through a PowerPoint presentation and recapping. Um, it's always good to note, there were fifty two sections of the development code that we needed to amend to comply. And again, then we had to make an amendment to our comprehensive plan, the Northwest specific plan, the Springbrook Oaks specific plan, and then the Springbrook Properties master plan. Elizabeth?
Excellent. Thank you. Um, good evening all. Elizabeth Decker with Jet Planning. As Doug mentioned, I have been working on this project with the city. Since last September, uh, have been enjoying, um, the opportunity to dig into these issues and as, you know, it wouldn't be a meeting without another PowerPoint. So let me go ahead and share that with you now. Get us started here. Um, so as Doug mentioned, we're here to discuss a proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan, the city of Newburgh development code and several of the specific plans and one master plan, all intended to, um, achieve compliance for duplex related issues under H B two thousand one. Um, and so, you know, in addition to complying with H B two thousand and one, there's some local momentum as well to incorporate duplexes. Um, and then a broader range of middle housing in part two, um, the idea being that it is our ways to expand development opportunities and remove barriers, um, by adding middle housing to the allowed mix and help build off some of that momentum of the recent housing needs analysis that was, um, completed and identified a range of housing needs in the city going forward. So just as Doug said, this is part one to deal with duplexes. Um, it's probably the most straightforward piece of it. There's a lot more detail when we get into the triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses and cottage clusters, which is a fun little tongue twister. Uh, I said, uh, you know, a few hundred times by now. Um, and so we'll be bringing that back to you, um, moving forward. But tonight we're here specifically to hear the amendments around duplexes. Okay, um, so as we worked on drafting these code amendments, we started first with an audit of the city's development code to understand where the opportunities and barriers might lie. Um, and then we crafted that draft and then final duplex code updates that you see in front of you in your packets to permit, um, the key is permitting duplexes on all lots where single family detached dwellings are permitted. Uh, and again, we're aiming for that adoption by the end of June twenty twenty one. Uh, and we will be continuing our work on the middle housing code updates to finalize some drafts with staff by the end of June, um, under our current contract and then moving into an adoption process this fall. Uh, as Doug mentioned, we did our best with, uh, virtual engagement tools, given our, our COVID realities. But we did have six meetings with the citizen advisory committee. We enjoyed getting to know, you know, a variety of folks there and getting their input. It really helped shape the, the concepts and then the draft. We had two public open houses, um, and the online surveys were companion pieces to the open house as an alternative way for people to provide feedback if they couldn't participate, um, you know, live, online. And we got hundreds of responses to both of those. So housing is clearly a priority in the city of Newburgh. I'm sure that comes as no surprise to any of you. Um, and so some common themes we heard was the desire to get more housing options that are more affordable. Um, you know, or less expensive. Um, but there was some concern about what the parking impacts could be and how to manage those. Um, particularly with the scale of some of these other housing units. Um, so when we talk about translating the H B two thousand and one direction for duplexes, you know, a duplex on any lot where single family could be permitted, pretty straightforward. But we did need to dig into, um, you know, a, a range of these adopted plans as Doug mentioned. So the first piece was looking at some of the housing policies and the comprehensive plan. Uh, first step, most significant was adding a policy that explicitly permits duplexes on those single family lots. Um, that complies division six sixty oh four six is the new section of state administrative rules. Um, that was developed, uh, through a statewide rulemaking process. So, um, you know, just in the housing policy, there are similar policies about providing for different types of housing, including accessory dwelling units. And we thought it was worth a specific policy on duplexes there. We also made a minor clarification on how net density gets calculated, um, from a policy perspective. And then we'll talk a little bit more about what that means in code, but fairly minor in, in the cop plan itself. The bulk of the work was definitely in the development code itself. Um, that's, you know, of course, the document that applies to development of individual lots. And so broad picture, you know, if you remember one slide from tonight, this is the slide to really pull out and, um, refer back to if, if you want to know what we're trying to achieve. So first is to amend the duplex dwelling definition to make sure that attached or detached configurations can be permitted. Um, permitting duplexes outright in all of the residential zones. Making sure that in those zones where they're permitted duplexes are allowed on the same size lots as single family detached dwellings and clarifying how density applies there, um, to make sure that those lots really can be developed with duplexes. Uh, applying the same dimensional standards with, that apply to single family detached dwellings with some minor modifications. Um, that, that apply to both single family and duplexes. And then a big piece, um, is looking at changes to the parking requirements. So that the new standard, minimum standard will be one per dwelling unit for duplexes and expanding some options around driveways and access. So I'll talk through a little bit what these mean in terms of the code. Um, first piece is dealing with duplexes or the definition for duplexes. All these pieces have to do with duplexes. Um, so what, what we, what came out of the rulemaking process, again, at the statewide level, um, there was, you know, sort of a, a larger committee that was formed with interests and representatives and stakeholders from across the state. They helped craft some very, some specific implementation roles that were adopted statewide and helped guide our work. And so one of the pieces that came out of that was promoting a variety of duplex configurations. So there's some attached options as shown on the top row here where the two units could be stacked side by side, um, or connected by a breezeway or a garage rather than, you know, a primary living space. And what we're also adding to the definition is detached options. So you know, it's sort of a newer concept that there could be two detached dwelling units of equal size or slightly different depending on how a developer wants to, to configure those. Um, that would be permitted on the same lot. Um, they would not have to share, share common walls. Those could possibly, you see in the bottom here, they could be side by side or even front or back. Just depends on the configurations of the site. So that is one of the big changes in the definitions. In terms of permitting duplexes, right, this pretty fundamental in the use table, making sure that duplex dwelling, as you see here, is permitted in all residential zones. This actually is already what the city of Newburgh code allows. So this didn't wind up being much of a change, but we confirmed that, um, this was correct. Uh, we also clarified that a type one review is required. That's, um, the staff level administrative review against clear and objective standards. That's the same review process that currently applies to single family detached dwellings. So again, we're just looking to treat them that exactly the same. Um, and making sure that, that that's a simple permitting process. When we talk about the applicability of these, you know, when we think of that, that use chart and, and where these uses duplexes will be permitted, again, it's all lots. Um, where a single family detached is permitted, which means all of the residential zones shown in, you know, full shade of yellows uh, on this map to the right. Um, so you can see it really has some citywide impacts. We'll talk a little about how those differ in some of the different master plan areas. But although we're expecting these to be broad impacts or, you know, broad, we're opening up the option broadly across the city. Um, we're expecting that the growth and uptake of these new units is going to be relatively modest. Um, really revising the zoning code is the first piece, uh, in terms of promoting additional dwelling types. And there are other pieces around, you know, land availability, financing availability, um, builders preferences, consumer preferences that are really going to dictate where and when and how many of these duplexes could be constructed. So although, you know, there could be citywide impacts, we're anticipating relatively modest growth. Um, in fact, the direction that comes in H B two thousand and one itself talks about potentially up to a three percent. Um, three percent of new housing units across all of the middle housing types. So duplexes being one part of that, but also the other triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses and cottage clusters. Um, and, you know, probably the, the most analogous experience that Newburgh and other cities have is thinking about accessory dwelling units that have been permitted with all single family detached homes. So very similar. Um, for the last decade or two, and we've seen relatively modest numbers of those built in the city. So, um, broad, but not deep. In terms of minimum lot sizes, uh, this was a significant policy change in order to comply with H B two thousand and one to reduce the minimum lot sizes for duplexes so that they match the existing minimum lot sizes for single family. And in fact, the way that the code is structured is we just have one minimum lot size that applies to both single family and duplexes. And you can see, um, in this table that, that significantly reduces the lot size for duplexes essentially by half. Um, we did not make any changes to the existing lot sizes for minimum lot sizes for single family with the exception of R three. Um, in the sense that R three is intended to be, um, a higher density zone. And so it made sense, we felt, um, and as reviewed by our advisory committee, their recommendation included a modest decrease to twenty five hundred square feet rather than three thousand. Um, so that the R three would allow slightly more dense development than the R two, um, given that R three is supposed to be a more dense zone. So modest change there. When we talk about density targets, um, the city of Newburg's code is a little bit unique in that it does not set maximum densities. Instead, it uses those minimum lot sizes to control how dense and how many units can be developed um, through a new subdivision, say, uh, or other ways of building new development. But the code does have density targets that talks about, um, the, the average range that are, that the city is looking for um, within each of these zones. So because these are targets and because they're averaged, we did not need to recommend any changes to the density targets um, to deal, to, to address duplexes. Um, so, you know, if the city were to, you know, see, meet that three percent exceeded, you know, we're talking five, ten, twenty years out. The city might want to revisit, um, those targets in the future, but historically, um, you know, the, the historic density has been below these targets. So there's, there's, there's some room for middle housing, including duplexes. Um, within the existing targets. So we did have to make a few, um, technical changes, what I like to call the density math. Um, there, there are a few places where maximum density standards do apply, mostly in the specific plan areas. And so we needed to make some changes to the math. Uh, and we count duplexes as a single unit for parity with single family so that, you know, they can be interchangeable in terms of whether a lot is developed as a duplex or a single family. Okay. Oh, and we did last piece, just to note on, on density is, you know, if we're not using density is necessarily the way to describe a project. Um, you know, how does a subdivision that comes forward? How do you, how do you evaluate that in terms of the potential impacts for infrastructure and uh, the traffic, uh, and other, you know, forms of, uh, forms of infrastructure? Stormwater, for example, like you just were discussing tonight. So we did add some provisions in the subdivision code that requires, um, the applicant to specify which unit types they're proposing. They're certainly allowed to do duplexes or single family, but they are required to specify and calculate the density so that the infrastructure can all be sized to be, uh, what's being proposed. In terms of dimensional standards that are going to define really the building envelope, the height, the lock coverage and the setbacks. Um, these need to apply equally to single family detached dwellings as well as duplexes. So again, you know, really simple, just make it the same one standard to rule them all. Um, so for the most part, we, in the low density district, the R one zone, which, um, you know, if you think back to the zoning map is- You know, if you think back to the zoning map, it is the majority of zoned, residentially zoned land in Newburgh. We're retaining the existing height and lot coverage standards um as part of the recommendation. But there are modest increases proposed to height and lot coverage in the R two. Uh, RP, that's a residential professional and the airport residential AR zones. Um, and those modest increases um just allow for a slightly more dense product in contrast to. The R one zone, and they also help set us up pretty well for when we add in the other middle housing types. Um, that'll be coming as part two. So this helps with duplexes and also as a preview of upcoming attractions. R three, we didn't um propose any changes. Uh, the standards there are already um, you know, pretty flexible in terms of allowing your average duplex. Parking is definitely an area where there are changes recommended. Um, so the change being proposed here is that the minimum off-street parking requirements. Uh, would be reduced to one per unit. Uh, that's, you know, again, a great math problem here, two or two spaces per duplex, right, two units. Uh, and that comes to us straight from the state code. Um, that's a very strict, you know, maximum that they've set that cities can't require more than that. Um, and that's part of the state direction to try to improve the feasibility of duplexes. Um, so that cities aren't, you know, asking for so much parking that it becomes impossible to to fit both the duplex and the parking onto the site. Um, so that's how we're implementing it locally. Uh, and. The other piece that we wanted to look at is if you figured out, oh, I'm sorry, last thing I would say, this is a minimum parking requirement. This is not a maximum. Uh, most of the time, a developer that's building a property is going to make the choice of what. Spaces fit and what they think that, you know, their target buyers or renters are going to be demanding in terms of amenities. Um, so we certainly could see proposals that have more than one place per unit, but, you know, from a city's perspective, this is a regulatory minimum. And then the other piece that goes along with that parking is the access standards, right? You've created this parking, how do you get to it? Um, and for duplexes, that's going to be mostly driveways, right? And so the current standards allow, they guarantee, you know, one driveway per lot. Um, and we wanted to make it a little more explicit that two. Two driveways per lot could be permitted um for a duplex if there are separate garages. Um, when some um config, when certain configuration standards can be met. So a change that we made here. Um, to try to make this more feasible. Right now, you can only have two driveways if you can get. Um, if there can be forty feet in between them. By the time you add a forty foot space and two driveways on the end, you're looking at a pretty wide lot, and that probably doesn't apply to the majority of lots in Newburgh. So we thought let's move, let's um shrink that down a little from forty feet. We're proposing a reduction down to twenty two feet. Uh, which is a generous on-street parking space. So that um, if you're bringing that that spacing down, there's more flexibility to fit it on the lot, but yet it's not shrunk so much. That you wind up with sort of a useless little piece of curb in front of a house where um where you've lost all on-street parking. So. By keeping it twenty two feet, we wanted to keep the option for on-street parking. We also are proposing the option um to reduce the minimum driveway width from twelve feet down to ten feet. Again, it'll still be an option to do a twelve-foot wide driveway, but if a particular site, uh, if a ten-foot wide driveway fits better. And again, that can preserve some more curb space and add some more flexibility for configuration, then that will also be an option. Last piece is looking at on corner lots, making sure that if if they're both local streets, um, that the two driveways could be permitted. On those two different frontages. So just a couple illustrations to think about what this could look like. We see a lot of new duplexes, um, you know, again, this trend is relatively new, but of the duplexes that have been built in the past, you know, five, ten years, let's say. Um, a lot of them tend to be this um, single shared driveway where the duplexes are joined at the garage. Um, so again, that's that's one driveway per lot. We expect to see a lot of that. But the picture on the right, we did want to make sure that this option to separate the garages could be achieved um on a greater number of lots with the two separate driveways. And then a few sort of, you know, miscellaneous hodgepodge um standards where we were crossing our. Crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, uh, is that we wanted to make a clarification. That either a duplex or a single family dwelling with an ADU could be permitted. Um, but the idea is and you 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 don't get two bites of the apple. You don't get a duplex and an ADU. Um, uh, at least for now, until we get into the other middle housing where you can get up to to more than two units. Per lot, but for right now, it's duplex or AD or ADU. Um, and whichever permitting path uh makes more sense for an applicant, they can elect. Well, we also had some special conditions in the stream corridor overlay. And so again, we wanted to add that parity between single family detached and duplexes to to make them. To ensure that they're treated the same in that area. Uh, we also dug into some of the non-conforming use standards. Um, and so there's two pieces of that. One is allowing existing single family non-conforming dwellings to be converted into a duplex. Essentially, if you have a house and you want to divide it internally to create a duplex, um, that that would be allowed to as as a non-conforming use. And then also, um, if you have a non-conforming lot of record, essentially, if you have a lot that's that's less than the minimum, the current minimum lot size that was legally created. Under previous zoning standards. Um, right now, you're allowed to construct a single family detached dwelling on that non-conforming lot of record. And since we're creating parity here, uh, we also wanted to allow duplexes on those those non-conforming lots of record as well. So that's what we're proposing in the code. And then sort of the the fun part really came in the master plans and specific plan. So. First piece, it and I say fun because um, these are a little bit unique in terms of how we approach them, but. Um, again, trying to achieve that same goal of making sure that duplexes are treated the same as single family detached. Uh, and given that some of these plans are, you know, twenty years or more. Are older, you know, twenty years or more or older. Um, and that, you know, people just weren't thinking about duplexes when they wrote these. So. A little bit of an uh of an interesting approach to preserve the integrity of those plans. Especially for areas that have been mostly built out, but yet achieve this parity um with single family detached dwellings. So in the Northwest Newburgh Plan, um, and just broadly, the overall approach that we that we use for all of these. Was um to permit, you know, is to add some footnotes essentially saying. We're going to maintain the integrity of these plans, but just, you know, note that throughout this plan, anywhere you see a reference to single family detached. It also means single family detached and duplexes. Um, and so we made some changes to achieve that in the specific plan as well as in the code. There's a code chapter on the Northwest Newburgh Plan as well. Um, so we adjusted the lot sizes for clarification as well as the standards that apply to duplexes um to make them the same. In Springbrook Oaks, um, we had to make, we made some changes to the specific plan itself in terms of of a few footnotes that we added. Um, that they should be treated as the equivalent of single family detached dwellings and permitted under the same conditions and design standards. And then we made analogous changes um proposed in the development code chapter for the Springbrook Oaks area. Um, to permit duplexes on the same size lots. Um, and there were also some attached dwelling unit standards. And so those going forward will apply to townhouses, um, but they won't apply to duplexes that that we specifically exempted those. Then, uh, very unique situation with the airport, not many cities have a an airport residential area. But when we looked at this, um, we just made it some pretty simple code changes. Um, to ensure that duplexes are permitted on all lots where single family detached dwellings are permitted, you know, as long as you built your airplane hangar. Uh, you can go ahead and single family or duplex. Um, the Springbrook Plan, we did make some changes um to the plan itself. There's a use table in within that plan. That talks about where duplexes can be permitted as well as other residential uses, and we made sure that anywhere a single family detached is permitted. Duplexes are also permitted. So that amendment is before you as part of this package. And the last piece um for these plans was looking at the riverfront area. Um, and here we needed to make code amendments, um, but not plan amendments. And so we needed, uh, you see some proposed code amendments that apply the same lot sizes and design standards. Um, that applied to single family detached. We're proposing to apply those to duplexes as well. And with that, I will hand it back over to Doug and remain available for any questions, and he can talk through um the findings and staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So, um, in your packet, there's an extensive set of findings. And so we've addressed the statewide planning goals. Uh, there was some robust analysis that was occurring under the housing goal. Um, you may remember that the city has a city council accepted a housing needs analysis, and there was some. Language that was going back and forth basically statewide as, do you have to? Apply the three percent that Elizabeth has mentioned on several occasions, or is it an option? And it is actually an option. So we've actually looked at our housing needs analysis and said, if we accommodated all of. The middle housing, that's all of those categories, that would actually be an additional fifty seven units. Onto what we had already projected within our housing needs analysis. And so we prepared findings to address that issue. Uh, that was brought up by the Fair Housing Council and as well as conversations with the Department of Land Conservation and Development. With those findings, um, for the statewide planning goals, staff concluded that we are in compliance. The Newburgh Comprehensive Plan, again, we had to go through all of our plan goals and policies. Uh, and concluded that we complied there. Similar to what we just dealt with in the uh store master plan, different division. Uh, administrative rules, but division forty six out of chapter six sixty. So we had to address all of the applicable provisions. In there, and so we made findings that, yes, we have a definition of duplex that is in alignment with the administrative rule. And so we walked through lockstep for each one of those. There were a number of requirements out of that division that did not apply. Uh, we are not a coastal community. We do not have an estuary. Uh, so there's some particular provisions and goals out of the statewide program we did not have to apply to. Then the other pieces, because we're just dealing with the duplexes, we did not have to make findings on the other middle housing, tries, quads, clusters and townhomes. Um, this was a unique one, as Elizabeth mentioned, because we have these specific plans and master plans. So everybody who has residential in R one, R two, R three, AR and RP, everybody got a measure fifty six notice. Um, which created a lot of questions. Uh, the language is actually prescribed in state statute. Uh, then we had to follow that up in the specific plans. And we had to do another round of noticing. Uh, so the Northwest Specific Plan, the Springbrook Oak Specific Plan. And the Springbrook Master Plan. Um, there were some additional noticing requirements and analysis we had to do because of those specific plans. So that is contained in your staff report. And that applies to the specific plans and to Springbrook. And so all of that material is in there. Next slide. So again, we had an ad hoc citizens committee uh that provided guidance to staff and the consultant team on this one. And they recommended a council approve the duplex regulations. We also ran this proposal by our affordable housing commission because we're talking about housing affordability. And they made their recommendation to council to adopt the comp plan development code and the specific and master plan. Amendments as they are proposed. Um, there were two supplemental packets that came out. So we received a letter from Friends of Yamhill County. Uh, essentially summer summarizing in support. They were also addressing the other. Middle housing piece, which we're not dealing with, that will happen later in the fall. Then we received a communication from uh Thousand Friends of Oregon. Uh, essentially supporting what we had done. We had some late comments from the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And those specifically related to in the ordinance to section four. And subsection B one and two. And we will need to look at that. They were suggesting that we should probably actually need to delete that language because they believe it may not be clear and objective, but I'll work with a consultant team. Before we get to council to clarify that. Then. Under section thirty six of the ordinance changes. Uh, they were asking some questions and clarification about the twenty five hundred square feet in the R three. Elizabeth walked through that tonight, and so we'll circle back with the DLCD staff and clarify for them. They may not have been able to put together all of the context. Of why that change was being proposed. And then under section thirty seven, they had again a similar question related to the lot size. And so we will follow up with, again, with DLCD staff on those quick late questions that we got from them. Next slide, Elizabeth, please. So I'm going to jump, if you don't mind, Chair, just to the recommendation for efficiency purposes. And so staff is recommending that the commission adopt resolution. Twenty twenty one dash three seven one.
Well, thank, thank you, Doug. And at this point, I'd like to open it up. I believe we had someone waiting to provide public testimony. Still in the room?
Mr. Chair, if I may suggest, if we have people who want to make comments, is have them clearly state their name. And their address, because we don't have any way of, I have a requirement, anybody who testifies, we have to notify them. And if we can't capture their name and their address, I will not be able to find out where they are.
Oh, thank you. So if anyone, is there anyone in the room that wanted to comment? And if so, please uh state your name and address for the record.
There is a Joseph. I'm going to promote him right now. You should be able to see him. Okay, just. Can.
Okay, great, great. Um. Yeah, my name is Joseph Arada, and I see that it's uh. I see. Hi, uh, I live at three seven one five Noel Drive in Northwest Newbury. Um, my wife and I bought this house about a year and a half ago. It's built in twenty twelve. Uh, it's a nice house in the neighborhood of nice houses. Um. And I have a couple of concerns. I I first heard about this duplex thing about a month ago. I got a letter from the from. Newburgh and it was really pretty incomprehensible, but. Uh, it has a sentence here. It says, uh, ORS two two seven one eight six requires city to print the following sentence. The city of Newburgh has determined that adoption of this resolution and subsequent ordinance for the city council. May affect permissible uses of your property and other properties in affected zones and may change value of your property, unquote. Then it says, actually, no determination determinations been made. Or is expected to be made on effect with proposal on the value of your property. That's a little weird. I I get back to that. But uh, my two main concerns are with property value and with with the parking thing. Um. It seems to me that that uh saying there's going to be minimum one parking spot per unit. Was going to cause a lot of on-street parking. Um, I I watched one of the, one of the recordings from a previous meeting online and uh. They said that the rationalization for that was that in Oregon. Uh, the average. Number of vehicles per household is zero to one. And I take exception to that because I don't think it applies to Newburgh at all. Like that number is probably skewed heavily by the high-density areas like Beersham, Portland. Where there's uh good access to mass transportation. And uh, people may only have one car or no or no cars in their household and get by very well. They're close to a max stop or a trim it stop, they can get on Wes. We don't have that in Newburgh. Newburgh is poorly served by mass transportation. You've got that Leam Hill bus that goes up Tiger and back a couple times a day. That's about it. It'd take me a half hour to walk down the bus stop. You know, from up here. Uh, so I think that that is completely unacceptable to use that. Number to compute how many parking spots we need per unit in Northwest Newburgh. It's, it's just wrong. Now, I know you're, I know you're uh adhering to the new state requirements. So you may not have too much flexibility there there, but I'm suggesting that there's got to be a way to push back. I see Elizabeth nodding. Got to be a way to to push back and and say, um. Let's encourage the developers to to put uh more than one parking spot in front of these units, because otherwise. You know, families are going to live there. They're going to have two or three or more uh vehicles in their household. We've got a house across the street has. vehicles in their household. We've got a house across the street has six cars regularly parked out there, two in their driveway and six around on the street. Well, imagine if you have an infill development, you put up half a dozen duplexes in there and suddenly in place for another, there's one house on a big lot. So it's said to subdivide that into three lots, put up half dozen duplexes. Now that, now those cars are, are parking on the street, they're coming around the corner. If you've ever driven in a, in a, like a northeast Portland area where there's a whole bunch of of cars parked on a narrow street, you can see it. So it's really not an ideal situation. I sure don't want to see that here. So I'm really concerned about that. Property value thing is another issue. It sounds to me like that this Oregon State Regulation really wants the, the planning commissions to make that determination of whether it's, whether the changes are going to affect property values. And it seems like from this letter that I got, that, that Newburgh doesn't want to say that. Because they're specifically saying, we're not saying that, we're not going to say that. And, and it seems like the state's saying that that's your responsibility to tell us what the effect on our property value is going to be from these changes. So I'd really like to have that, that information. Our specific situation here at 3715 Noel Drive is there's a big lot behind us. It's a triple-sized lot. My understanding is the people who own this, this property in this area subdivided it, saved that lot out from themselves. So there's an older home there. And there, there's a bunch of these nice houses that were built in 2012 or around there, like ours. It's a very nice neighborhood. But there's an elderly woman lives, lives over there. It's right behind our backyard. And I, I would fully expect that when she passes, her heirs will subdivide that lot sell it to a developer. And according to these new regulations, there's a possibility of of three duplexes or maybe triplexes or fourplexes. Several units going in that space. We'll have these three-story tall buildings looking over into our backyard. And it's, it's going to drop the value of our property. The question is by how much their, their parking is going to be coming around the corner in front of our house. You know, what's that going to do to our property value? So this is what's concerning me. Obviously, I'm, I'm outlining kind of a worst-case scenario, but, but you know, we're, you know, I just retired. I'm in my early 60s. We're probably going to be here for at least 20 years. So this is really important stuff for me and, and I would like to know how Newburgh is going to address these concerns for, for us in our home until we die, whatever, you know.
Okay, well, thank you. Doug, is there any part of that you can address?
Well, the, the first one on parking, as we went through this process, we got a lot of comments about parking. Actually, I think I shared it one of our first meetings with our consultant team. Parking is going to come up. We heard that through the virtual open houses. We heard that through the community survey work. But the bottom line is, the state says you cannot require more than one space per unit, in this case, two spaces for a duplex. And so we don't have any legal authority to go beyond that. If we tried to, we could get appealed and we could end up in front of the land use board of appeals, which would cost a significant amount of money to try to defend it, which my opinion would be, we would lose, because the administrative rule says no more than one. So that's why we tried to address this issue about how can we be efficient with the on-street spaces we have. And I always remind members of the community that it's a public street. Anybody can park on the public street. And so that's where, when we were talking about duplexes, you could have a shared driveway, you could have separated driveways. What we were trying to find ways to ensure that we were preserving as much as possible on-street parking spaces. To the issue about the Measure 56 notice, Joseph, is that there is some very prescriptive language in state statute. And part of that language, I don't have it sitting in front of me, so I'm going to summarize. It says that it may affect your property values. We don't do an analysis if it will or not. There's no data to collect if that will be true or not. I remember reading an article a couple of months ago in Utah, where they were actually getting more of these middle type of housing. And in that particular study, it indicated that it did not diminish property values. But in Oregon, I'm not aware of specific data analysis that says that if you have a duplex next to a detached single-family home, that it reduces the value of the detached single-family home. So yes, the notice says, you know, it may, and then the city in that case says that we're not doing that analysis. And essentially, that's why we don't have any data sets.
So in other words, it would be pretty speculative. It would depend on the design, the, the specific neighborhood. Too many things to quantify.
Absolutely.
Well, my point remains that, that the fact that the state statute has that, that language in it, that you have, you're required to print that statement. It means that they're expecting you to do the analysis and to make a call on it. And if you're not doing that, you know, I mean, if my property value was cut in half, that, that would be the thesis of my lawsuit against City of Newburgh, who didn't do the analysis and tell me, you know.
So again, I don't have
Cost you money too.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have any data to show. I mean, we have situations in Newburgh now where we have detached single-family homes and we have duplexes next to them. I can't tell you, you know, from a tax assessed value purpose. That's one set of data that's, that's there, but that's, you know, it's a percentage of what the real market value is.
Well, we can't sit here and design the study right here. I'm just saying that there probably should have been one at some point. That's my, my opinion. You know, it's, I don't know. And I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying this now so, so that I will have said what I was thinking about this. I think I also sent you an email, Doug, with, with these things, and I want to make sure.
Yep, we've got that and it's in the record, Joseph.
Okay, cool.
Okay, well, thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions? Are there any other persons wishing to make a public comment?
Yes, there is. There's a Lisa. One moment.
Hi, I'm Lisa Delzer Cox. I'm at 714 South Meridian. I just had a real quick question about tax lots. I know some of the duplexes are on a single tax lot and some are on two tax lots with single-family dwellings on one tax lot. Does it then follow that if if the duplexes were then also built on that property, would then they also be on, on a single tax lot as well? How does that, how does that work with the, with the duplex? Or would it depend on the, on the duplex?
So a duplex is on a single lot. So it's, it's not two lots and they're attached. That's a different, we'll have to, we're going to get to that in the fall. So in this case, a duplex is two units on one lot. And so as Elizabeth stated earlier, they can be attached, they can be detached, they could be stacked, they could be one in front or behind, they could be connected by breezeways. And so the ad hoc committee looked at all of those various options. And their feedback back to the consultant team and staff was provide the flexibility that would allow these different types of duplex development to occur, which will be driven by the developer themselves of what they believe is marketable and how they will organize those two units on that, on that one parcel.
On the single lot. Okay, thank you.
So in other words, if I understand that correctly, Doug, say a duplex is built on a single tax lot, it would be up to the writing of the duplex, how the, how the duplexes were owned on title as to the property tax liability.
Well, a duplex would be under one ownership. You could live in one side, run out the other side. You could have a duplex. You could rent both portions of that particular duplex.
So the actual ownership would still not be divisible. It would still be one owner, I understand.
Yes. And then you get into the wonky stuff about condominiums. Where you're owning air rights. But then the land around the units themselves are under common ownership, so. But condominiums are not, we have a few condominiums in Newburgh projects, but they kind of went by the wayside about 15 years ago.
So then with that, you know, with the duplex on one tax lot, you couldn't necessarily so if you decided to sell one half, you would run into the same concern where you would have to appeal to the city to split the tax, to split the lot into two tax lots to sell one side of the duplex, is that?
So if a duplex is on one lot, if somebody came and said, oh, I want to sell half of my duplex and I want to create a separate parcel, well, then we'd say, well, you need to go through a land division process. But now your lot size, you can't meet the minimum lot size, because the minimum lot size is 3,000 square feet. So then we'd have to give them guidances. Well, you can make an application, but you know, here's all the standards. You know, we don't think that you're going to be able to meet those standards.
I see. So that is one thing with this is that it would, it would, you'd build the duplex on one lot, but it would kind of prevent you from, from splitting it in the future. Whereas now you could potentially split it. You really couldn't because of the minimum lot size for the division.
Well, even today, so under our current regulations we have, you, you can do a duplex in R1 or R2. The issue is if you do a duplex in R1, you have to have a 10,000 square foot lot instead of a 5,000 square foot lot. In R2, you have to have a 6,000 square foot lot. And under the new regulations, it's a 3,000 square foot lot. And so again, we, so we have to treat them the same as we would a detached single-family home. So even under those existing regulations we have, it doesn't allow you to split for that duplex. You got to, I duplex, it's on one lot. It stays as a duplex.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to provide some public testimony or have comments?
I am not seeing any more hands.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I'd like to close the public testimony portion of the hearing and ask if there are any final comments from staff.
The only final comment from staff would be our recommendation, and our recommendation is to adopt Resolution 2021-371.
Thank you. So let's open it up to deliberation of the commission. Any commissioners have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing done. Is there some action? Is there any proposal or action that any commissioner would like to offer regarding the resolution?
Commissioner Capri, I'd like to approve that we adopt the 2021-371 Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Jeffrey Musall.
Yes.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Robert Sherry.
Yes.
Jason Dale.
Yes.
Thank you. And the motion passes. Okay. So moving on, we have another legislative hearing, this time regarding municipal code Title 15 dot 250 dot 080 and the Comprehensive Plan and zoning designations. So like to open this hearing and begin it by calling for if there are any abstentions, conflicts of interest or objections to jurisdiction. Okay, hearing done. I'd like to go ahead and move to staff report. And open it up to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So no PowerPoint on this one. We already PowerPointed you out on two, so we're going to stop that for the evening. So I'm going to enter the entire staff report, its exhibits and attachments into the record. This is a proposal when we were making all of the changes to the Riverfront Master Plan. You may remember, we went through all the development code, the comprehensive plan, the map, the zoning map changes. There was one piece that we omitted, and that was in our annexation regulations. And so at the time of annexation, if you have a comprehensive plan designation, then you automatically get applied your zoning designation. So in this case, we created the mixed-use area on the mill site, that 21 and a half acres. And what we did not capture was putting in this particular chapter in 15250080 is that at the time of annexation, that mixed use would get the mixed employment zoning designation. So this is just kind of the last of the cleanup that needs to occur on the implementation components of that. So in your Exhibit A, you'll see in the double underline where we have the mix that the mix allows a C2M1, M2, or it will be this new ME zone. And as determined by the director, in this case, in the riverfront area, we follow what the master plan calls for. And then in the industrial, the verbiage was missing as determined by the director. So in industrially, you get an M1, M2, M3, M4 and the AI. So again, in the riverfront area, the industrial portion of the mill, mill site would be given the M2 consistent with the Riverfront Master Plan. As we've done in our previous hearings this evening, we had to address all of the statewide planning goals. And we've done that and concluded that we comply. We had to address the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan, its goals and policies. And in your packet, we have all of those findings and concluded that we comply with all of those provisions. And then this is legislative procedure, so Chapter 15100 applies. And our finding in that situation was that through this process, hearing process, is that we are following it in order to do an amendment to our development code. And that's my presentation on.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rux. Is there anyone in the, any room that would like to offer public testimony or?
Not seeing any hands.
Okay. So at this point, we'll go ahead and close the public testimony and ask for a final comment from staff.
Staff's recommendation is to adopt Resolution 2021-370.
Thank you, Doug. Turn it over to commissions, commissioners. Anyone have any questions or comments? This one seems pretty straightforward.
Planning Commissioner Wright. Just thought on the page 517, the designations table, that mixed class, ACU strike or M dash two, should there be a comma after M2? And then ORM dash E?
I can add a comma. That's, that's easy enough. Yes.
Okay, that was it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing no one. Is there a proposal for action?
Planning Commissioner Wright moves to adopt Resolution 2020-370. Adopt the proposed development code Title 15 Amendment, 15.250.080.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And thank you. We have a, a motion and a second. Can we get a vote, please?
Jason Dale.
Yes.
Robert Sherry.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Jeffrey Musall.
Yes.
Well, thank you. And that passes. So moving on, it looks like we have a workshop on Newburgh Urban Renewal Plan and Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So this is more of a briefing of where we're at in regards to our urban renewal plan proposal that we've been working on for 15 months or so. So we finished the feasibility study, and we brought that forward to city council back in July. They accepted that feasibility study, and it says that the proposed 600-acre urban renewed district, which encompasses downtown, the riverfront area, and then two connecting pieces along River Street and Blaine Street, was feasible to do. Subsequent to that, in August, we established the Newburgh Urban Renewal Agency by ordinance. And so they're in effect and in place. We provided the planning commission several briefings as we went through preparing the feasibility study. So we're now in the process of writing the plan and the report. Again, we have an ad hoc committee who's been advisory to staff and the consultant as we've been working on this project. We've got now to the point where we'll be taking the final draft of the urban renewal plan and report to the advisory committee on May 24th for their recommendation. Following that particular meeting, then we will go to the Urban Renewal Agency on June 7th. And they will hold a meeting, and then they will refer the Urban Renewal Plan and Report to the overlapping taxing districts, so that's the other districts who impose taxes on real property. And we will start, then what's called the confer consult process, which lasts for 45 days. So I'm currently scheduling that meetings with the various taxing districts, having some pre-meetings with a number of them, explaining where we're at, what we're doing, how we got to where we are today. We did have one interesting twist as we were going through this. Of course, the mill site sold, and they appealed their tax bill. And so the real market value, then a corollary is the assessed value, and that property went down significantly. So we had to go back and redo some of our financial modeling. And we had to end up cutting about 5.7, 5.8 million dollars worth of projects out of our list, and those are in $20,000 values. So we went back, met with the committee, we did that. We actually, there were two additional roads that were in the, on the mill site, and we worked with the owner. And they identified and concurred that there was not a need for those two roadways, given some very preliminary conceptual design layouts of what they're anticipating for redevelopment. So we were able to reduce that 5.8 million dollars. We got that done. So the consultants now have gone back and finished up that financial modeling. In your packet, I provided some maps, and these are kind of early versions where we were at at the time that I was putting together this packet. But you have one that shows the different sub areas, and so we have sub areas A through H within the 600-acre proposed district. So we've got Area A is the mill site proper. B is between basically Rogers Landing Road and River Street on the south side of the bypass. C is on the north side of the bypass, off a weatherly way over to the railroad tracks. And we got an area D, which is between the railroad tracks, Ninth Street and River Street. Then an E is between Wynewski and River Street and to the south of Ninth. And then we have the two connecting pieces, I mentioned, River Street going up north towards First Street, and then Blaine Street from Ninth up towards First. And then, of course, we have the downtown area, which is a little over 100 acres of this proposed district. And so the committee, when we were looking and evaluating all of this, was looking at, you know, kind of a hierarchy of where do we get the most opportunity for new development, which brings tax dollars to future, to taxing districts in the future. So we kind of looked at those employment areas, industrial, then the mixed employment areas, and then kind of the mixed commercial, where we got commercial on ground floor and housing above, both in the riverfront and in the downtown area. Then kind of the multifamily areas, what we currently call multifamily, which that vernacular is all changing with the middle housing program. And then finally was the detached, single-family homes. So I've included some maps. So this program is about infrastructure. It's transportation, it's sewer, it's water, it's stormwater. There is an esplanade trail identified along the bluff, you know, in sub areas A and B. There's some undergrounding of some overhead utilities in the downtown area, which is H along Second Street, to further advance the downtown improvement plan. And then there are a couple of parking lots identified in the downtown area. That's kind of the gist of all of this. This ends up with what's called a maximum indebtedness amount for the program, at about $106 million over 30 years. There's a little over $9 million that's identified for administrative costs over that 30-year period. So that's, it leaves about $95.5 million of actual infrastructure improvements to attract new development. Jobs was another topic of discussion for the ad hoc committee is, when the mill closed, we lost over 200 jobs. And working to recapture those 200 jobs and more back in the future, we've done some initial analysis at the mill site, and this is the area to the to the east of River Street. And we anticipate that we could see, you know, 1.2 to 1.5 million square feet of new industrial space in redevelopment as we proceed forward in time. Right now, we're scheduled to be in front of the city council for a public hearing on the urban renewal plan on August 2nd of 2021, and looking for ordinance adoption by council on August 16th of 2021. So a lot of activities have been going on in the world of preparing an urban renewal program. So with that, I will stop and see if there are any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Doug? Did you see them implode those two buildings?
I saw the videos. Yeah, we learned about it just a little bit, a little bit, you know, a couple of hours before they exploded the legs off of a couple of the bigger pieces of boiler equipment and so forth that were out at the mill site.
Yeah, we got a notice and went down and watched. It was pretty interesting.
So there's a, it's quickly going away. If you remember what it looked like on December 31st to what it looks like today. Lots of things are going, are gone.
Is there, is there a link to a video somewhere?
It's on, it's on the city's Facebook.
Okay, check it out. It's, they said implode, but they basically just fell over, so still cool, though. Big boom. Okay, anything else, anyone?
That's all I got on that. And so the last piece I have, Mr. Chair, is the
Items from staff?
Items from staff and the forward calendar. So as a reminder to everyone, and please have it on your calendars, is on June 7th at 6:00 PM, we have a joint work session with the city council on the other middle housing components, tries, quads, cottage clusters, and townhomes. Then at your meeting that's coming up in June, and the schedule may change a little bit. We may only have one case on that evening, so it might be a short night for all of you. Then in July, we've got the urban renewal, and so this will be coming back. One of the steps in this process is we have to bring this forward to the planning commission. The planning commission has to make a determination that the urban renewal plan is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. So I'll be working on that. I've already read the draft, the materials, all there, but I'll be preparing a report for that. And so that's your July meeting. At this point, we only have one item. One of the vacations or two of the vacation rentals might move to the July meeting as well. And then I'm working on annexations in the riverfront area. And so I received another piece of the data I needed today from the Oregon Department of Transportation. So I'm waiting for one more application. So that would annex a lot of the area that's in the riverfront into the city limits. And then September, I will be out, I will not be at your September 9th meeting. So Patrick Davenport will be present, and so will Keith Leonard. And you'll be talking about the West End Mill District. And the work again, and this is further implementing our downtown improvement plan. So that's creating the craft industrial M5 zone, which is a mixed use of industrial, commercial, and residential. I will also be starting conversations with city council on Monday about urban growth boundary expansion. And so I've just got some tentative dates later in the fall. We may be bringing a proposal to officially adopt the housing needs analysis, our economic opportunities analysis, and our public semi-public by making modifications to our comprehensive plan. It may be November before I get to that, but right now I've got it penciled in in October. Then there's another, where we are anticipating an application from a couple of property owners for an urban reserve designation. That will not come to the planning commission. That actually goes to a group called the Newburgh Urban Area Management Commission, which is a joint commission between the city and the county. But I will provide you a briefing on that particular proposal, but there'll be no action required by the planning commission. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Well, thank you. At this point, is there, are there any items from commissioners? Well, hearing none. I suppose we could call this a wrap. First, I'd just like to thank staff. There's a lot of things came out tonight, a lot of work definitely went into what was put together, so thank you. And then I'd like to go ahead and adjourn the May 13th, had to remember the date, 2021 meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission. Thank you.